If you'd like to call, there's an upcoming meeting tonight at 6:30. Councilmember Johnson, please.
Please stand.
Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great broadening of justice for all.
Mr. Johnson, one more please.
Mayor Heffron? Mayor Heffron? Mayor Proton Crossman?
Here.
Councilmember Lamb?
Present.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
And Councilmember Ketch?
And sorry, but Mayor Heffron and Councilmember, guess that you already had previous lines and that could not be at tonight's meeting. So now, number four, announcements of upcoming community events. Mr. Johnson, can you first talk about our cooling centers and what they are focused for our community?
Yes. Obviously, it's been very hot this last week and it's going to be hot this week and probably next week. The cooling center at the community center, at the civic center just behind City Hall, is going to be activated all this week, September 6th through September 9th, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Next week, depending on the temperature, it may be activated again, but we'll post that on our website. Just a couple of notes. We are unable to accommodate animals, so sorry, no pets. Masks are not required. Hopefully, that's good news. And if you have questions about the cooling center and/or if you're not able to access the website for next week's availability, you can call 909-596-8776. That's the Community Services Department, and they will give you an update for next week.
Thank you. Mr. George May.
Good evening, Mayor Proton, councilmembers, city staff, Laverne residents. I just want to talk about some of the things that are happening at Laverne Library this month. This month, we started our new session of the Smartypants Storytime. That's going to be held every Friday from 11:30 to 12:00 p.m. It is for children ages 2 through 5 with a parent or caregiver. There'll be books, songs, rhymes, and motion activities. And during each week, there'll be a specific activity for that Storytime. This week, there's going to be color and cut out a school board, school bus on a road. Next week, there'll be a make a friendship flower. In the last week, there'll be a color and label of motions. Attendance is limited, so advanced registration is required, and you can do that by going to the library or going to visit.ellacounty.org/events and this isolates the search to Laverne Libraries, and you can register that way. We also have an activity kit for school-aged children from ages 5 to 12. It's a nature explorer. It involves clear glass, clear jar, the air holes, and requires a person who picks up the activity to look in their backyard and see what kind of plant and animal they can find and put it into the jar. And when they're done, look back. Also, we have activity kit for teens ages 13 to 17. It's called Solve a Library Mystery. The person will get a bag with back-to-school supplies. However, it will have a combination lock on it, and in order for them to open up that lock and get their goodies, they have to answer four questions. Three of those questions provide the numbers to the lock, and the fourth question provides the order of those numbers. And the last two programs we have are in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs from September 15th through October 15th. The first one is an adult activity kit dealing with Tala Bara tiles, the traditional Mexican ceramic art form. The materials that will be divided are template print of cardstock, colored markers and pencils, so the person can create their own tiles. And the last one is a program for ages 5 through 12. It's on Wednesday, September 28th at 6 o'clock. It's called Meet the Artist Frida Collar. Attendees will learn about her life and paintings, and then the persons, attendees, will get a chance to create their artwork based on her paintings. So that's what goes on in September. There's something for everybody, so please come and join us and play.
And the air conditioning works.
Air conditioning does work. Very good.
Thank you. Ms. Yvonne Gayakos.
Good evening, and good evening, Mr. Johnson. City councilmembers, Mayor, city residents. Mr. Johnson? Present. My name is Yvonne Gayakos, and I am the vice chair of the CAFI Committee, Cultural Awareness and Social Inclusion. And I would like to invite everyone to our upcoming meeting, which will be held tomorrow right here in City Council Chambers at 5:00 p.m. So if you're around, please come and, you know, all are welcome to attend our meeting. The topic is going to be public thinking, something that I learned about recently, and I thought maybe that giving a presentation on public thinking and what is public thinking and how it could benefit all residents in our community gives back to our community as well. This is a very important subject. So please join us tomorrow, 5:00 p.m. right here in City Council Chambers for our CAFI meeting, and I'm just gonna do it. Oh, one more thing, say. CAFI is going to be co-sponsoring with the Laverne Historical Society in October. I know it's a little, it's a month away, but Mr. May bringing up Hispanic Heritage Month, we are going to be co-sponsoring with the Historical Society presentation on Dia de los Muertos that will be held at Tocqueft on October 10th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And we have a great presenter, and we're going to have a Nofrenda, an Ultra, also on display. And yeah, thank you, good thing to come.
Thank you. Any other announcements for upcoming community events?
Good evening, Mayor Proton and City Councilmembers. I just wanted to remind the residents of the City of Laverne that this Thursday, September 8th, from 12:00 noon to 1:30 p.m. is the Probation Oversight Committee meeting. There was a meeting today, as a matter of fact, LA County Board of Supervisors did continue to discuss the SYTF and Juvenile Camp Detention Centers. Although the Board of Supervisors voted not to have the Level 4 707B offenders at Camp Afervon Page, there have been a turn of events that may bring that back to the table. There is a lawsuit, City of Santa Clarita filed against the LA County Board of Supervisors, and they have filed for injunction, the decision has not yet been made. So if that injunction is upheld, they will be forced to find an alternate location, as well as a multimillion-dollar lawsuit, a class action lawsuit against LA County Probation Department for sexual abuse and misconduct at Camp Scott, which is the location that the Board of Supervisors has chosen. So those two reasons alone, plus many others, could very easily put Camp Afervon Page back on the map. So I encourage the residents, if they are available, please email info@poc.lacounty.gov, email your comments, or if you're available to attend the meeting via WebEx, which is like Zoom, but it's their own version of that. And there is a phone number you can call. If you cannot do through the Internet, you can call and just listen and/or speak over the phone, so.
Can you say that website one more time for everybody?
Yes. It's an email address, info@poc.lacounty.gov. And you can email them requesting the link to participate in the Internet meeting or the phone number, and there's a password and code that you would have to enter in, but it is open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. So another hand of this.
My name is Lily Brenna. I have two events regarding Bonita School District. The two meeting, one is tomorrow night is school ball meeting. Actually, school ball meeting is open for everyone, for public, not just for Bonita parents, citizens too, especially even my two kids in private school, not in Bonita, I still attend every single month because so many very important issues, especially right now, so many bills coming to our public school, you might see in the news, they are real, even worse, because we found out so many things happening. The first way from last, last, you just think about something like a map, Google Map is not map, it's a ma- mayor, I don't know how to say it, okay, minor attractive or something like that. So something you feel like a curious, our kids know a lot more than us. So we have to go to school ball meeting to figure out what is really teaching in school ball meeting. So I encourage everyone, really go to take a look. Maybe your kids, your grandkids, they are going to learn all this, maybe not your family volume. So that's the first thing tomorrow, 6:00, Bonita School District. The second meeting is very important, is a candidate foreign will happen in, so it will be September 8th. It will be a Zoom meeting. So Bonita School District will have a three-six open in November. We really, really want to vote for the right person. It doesn't matter if you support Democrat or Republican, it doesn't matter. Actually, this meeting is hosted by Bonita Democratic Council. Actually, I am pretty conservative, you know, so I don't really belong to this group. But I encourage everyone, go to the link to register. Their website is not really working, democrata-bonitademocrat.gov is not working, but the meeting ID, I already have the ID, 822-546-817, sorry, repeat again, 822-546-81997. It will be September 8th, 7:00 to 9:00. So the information already have the pre-answered 12 question, but I think it's too general. They didn't really ask some really important issue we're concerned, and I encourage everyone go to attend the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, we'll move on. Number five, Consent Calendar, Item D, Youth and Family Action Committee Executive Board Appointment has been pulled. Correct, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. So vote on the rest of the consent calendar besides D.
I move to approve the rest of the consent calendar absent item B.
Second?
Second.
Vote. All approved. Please for it to come up there. Well, we have three approved and the other two, I'm not sure if you can hear this, no, okay. As long as we say it, if they have put up on the screen. Excellent. All right. So now, Item D, Youth and Family Action Executive Board Appointment. Mr. Johnson, you asked for this to be pulled.
Yes, I understand your request.
I think it's for the public also. Do you have any words?
Yes.
Do you want to, just want to hold?
For reasons to hold it?
We've hold it, yes.
The Youth and Family Action Committee.
Oh, yes. It was just for further discussion, that was on, yeah, for a later date.
Oh, so come up with.
Okay. I just asked for it to be pulled for further discussions for a later date.
For a later date.
Yeah.
Oh, to postpone it?
Come tonight.
Is there any reasons?
Just for further discussion, so that everybody can have time to discuss it.
The rest of the council?
And input, yeah, from residents.
Is there any urgency to have this vote tonight?
The next Youth and Family Action Committee meeting is on, I believe it's on Tuesday, the 27th, which falls after our next council meeting.
So they wouldn't be hard to postpone it to the next council meeting?
No.
But you only have one application.
Yeah.
Two other members that are here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone speak?
I do. Hello, Robin Carter, resident. Yes, I was at the last meeting for the Youth and Family. We only had one applicant that submitted an application, and so the committee, which he has, the candidate has been on the committee since the inception of the committee, and he is more than qualified and as in the past, the annual council, it's, you're just, you're ratifying this decision that the committee did. So I ask that the vote is taken tonight, so we can move forward with our committee moving forward on it. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, any response?
Well, I think a good point was made. There was one applicant, and the Youth and Family Action Committee Executive Board, I believe, voted unanimously to recommend the appointment of the applicant to the committee. So if it were delayed till the next meeting, I don't think it would interfere with the following committee meeting on the 27th. However, nothing's going to change. You have one applicant. So I'm not sure what there is to discuss, so.
Okay. Any response from the other council members? Is there a motion? Sorry.
I move to approve of item B.
And I'm allowed to say, correct, so second. A discussion, sorry. Councilmember Lamb.
So I would just echo that there has been one applicant that was widely publicized through the website, through social media, through members of the community. I know I reached out to various members who have not served on the YFAC previously, since I know that there has been a desire from the public to be able to engage in different committees. I also advise that when the vote are opening for access transportation. For whatever reason, the only applicant we have for YFAC is the applicant we received, Don Ketter. So I don't see a reason not to appoint him, especially based on his past work in this community and on this committee in particular. My concern and my question at this point is that if Mr. Johnson is choosing to abstain, and we have, we don't, we're here, we don't have enough to pass anything.
No, we do. We have a forum. If it's vote 2-1, it still would pass. If it's vote 2-0-1, it still pass.
Well, I'm, I want to make sure that that's right, in the parliamentary procedure, that we don't need a majority of the fine total, just the majority of the forum.
Of the forum.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I believe in that even if we have a forum, and that we have business to abide to, that we keep moving forward. So, second, I would ask for a vote on this. And 2-0, it's a stationary vote, it passes. Thank you. Okay, now to Item 6, Public Communication. Want to remember, remind, public communication, this set aside for items not listed and any other place on the agenda, and that there is a three-minute time limit on our public comments. So the first one we have is Judy St. John for public comment. Welcome, Judy.
Where I live, my property backs up to Fairplex Drive, so I'm actually in the City of Pomona, but bordering Laverne and San Dimas. So I just want to talk about how we share common interests, all of us who live around the fairgrounds. And I think it's important for you to know what Fairplex is proposing for their zoning, for their specific plan in the City of Pomona. I don't know if you know that there have been two meetings for the public to attend to learn about what it is that they are thinking they'd like to do there. I was actually shocked to learn at the last meeting that they want to build 10,000 housing units on the fairgrounds. And when you think about the traffic that that will cause, I think it's important that your residents and that you are able to weigh in and to see how well their plan will fit. I think your input and your residents' input is important when you think about Carvana and how the residents of Laverne were able to help in the effort to help Carvana go away. It was causing terrible traffic, traffic problems for residents of Laverne and of Pomona. So anyway, I hope that maybe you'll contact the city and ask to be notified of the meetings that take place regarding the specific plan.
Thank you. Lisa Gomez? Thank you, Lisa.
My name is Lisa Gomez, and I live in the City of Pomona, right near the Los Angeles County Fairgrounds. Within the past seven or eight years, many residents that live in the surrounding area have noticed increase in, an increase in noise, traffic, and trash, just in general. Now, the Fairplex has released their specific plan. That will not be good for both Laverne and Pomona residents. I believe we are all aware of what happened when the Fairplex held raves. Two young women died. Carvana was another disaster. And now, the Fairplex is proposing 10,500 units, housing units, but what are they going to house? They want a wellness center. Is that for mentally ill? That's the question. What are they going to house? And it will impact all of us. So I urge all of the council to please get involved, ask questions, protect your Laverne residents, because this is not going to be good. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sylvia Herota? Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sylvia Herota, and I live right on the borderline of Pomona and Laverne. And I really want to stress the traffic conditions that we're going to have with the Fairplex, not counting the police, the fire department, depending on what their terminology is, on wellness housing. That's my concern. Also, there's just too much traffic around. They say they're going to do traffic studies, but we, the community, can tell them right out hand what the traffic is already without doing these studies, you know, on Arrow Highway and White, New Gary, and Benita. All those areas are so trafficked up right now that it's, and besides the housing, they also want to put up like a park, they want to put up vendor sites where people can sell stuff, they also want to put up farming area where people can grow their own farm vegetables. It's just a whole big, let's say, comparison to like Elysian Park in LA. Can we really accommodate all that? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Joe Zella? Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm also a resident of Pomona, I live by the fairgrounds on the east side. I'm gonna, I'm not going to say much on what the fair is contemplating until they actually put something on paper. I think it's a waste of time. Two things, I think, that mainly the supervisors, not the city, not the fairgrounds, but the supervisor need to look at. One is water use. 10,000, 10,000 units of housing to start with, that's a real estate version of Carvana as far as I'm concerned. And also, the use of the fairgrounds as a national disaster logistics site. If they develop that, it will not have the flexibility required in times of a great national disaster. I think more people more, become more aware of what that might entail. Recently, people were informed about the, most people know there's a great flood in the winter of 1860, '61. It flooded the state. It flooded from Vancouver to San Diego. If we lose the fairgrounds and something like that happens, we would be hard pressed to find a place for logistics. That's just one thing that the Fairplex has not considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry Mascoro?
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Henry Mascoro. I reside in Laverne on Benita Avenue, walking distance to the Fairplex. We attended a meeting on August 31st regarding an update draft plan for Fairplex in Pomona. Is there any way someone can address a letter possibly to the City of Pomona to let the neighborhood around where I live and everybody else in the area in Laverne know when they will have another meeting in November? When I did ask, they said it's either going to be the first week or second week, but we're not sure. So I wanted to address that. And then, let's see. I feel that there should be a way to notify the residents what their intentions are and what are your plans to protect our main streets as Benita and White Avenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mike Brenna?
Good evening. Yes, I'm a Laverne resident for four years, and we live just east of White on Benita. And we just got, last week, we just found out about this expansion at the Fair. And, and I'm surprised that the City of Laverne or anybody hasn't contacted the people involved in the area of the residents, because I think it's going to be a big thing. They talked about 10,500 housing units, but even if there's just two people, you know, that'd still, that'd still be 21,000 people moving in that small, a few hundred acres. And, you know, in Laverne, we got 34,000 for this whole city. I mean, you're going to put 20,000 right there, and, and then the traffic, and just like the other people said, the water. They also talked about. They also talked about over a million square feet of retail space, commercial space. They also mentioned an 8,000 square foot, or 8,000-seat, you know, like an event stage for there. And I mean, they have so much stuff to think about going in there. I can't imagine how you get back and forth, you know what I mean? You know how the fair is all the time, how it just jams up everything, which people don't mind because it's only lasted for a few weeks or a month to join in on it. But they're still going to try to have the fair. I can't imagine how big the fair would be. But they're still trying to have the fair. They say they're going to try to keep the NHR, you know, the drag race there, but I can't imagine after one event, you know, rattles windows at our place, let alone have 10,000 people, or 10,000 units, right? They didn't fix it. I'm sure they would have to push that out right away. But other people brought up some important things, you know, like you say, emergency and everything. But I just can't believe that, you know, like you say, traffic, water, power. We can only water once a week right now here. And we've got alerts coming over here today. You can't use no power because they're afraid it's going to be shut off. And how would you put this much more people in here and events and stuff? So I'm just seeing if you are going to be, put this on the council for a meeting or something where the people can discuss it or we can send out, especially the people in the south end of Laverne that's affected by this, you know? Because I think it's going to be pretty dramatic, you know? If we don't say something or do something, you know, it's already went this far without anybody even knowing anything about it as far as meeting. So I appreciate your time, and I hope you do something. Thank you.
Do we have anybody on the phone? Okay. Do we have anybody in the audience? Ms. Pasha?
Good evening, again. I want to take a moment to thank Sean Igo and his team, everybody involved at Public Works, who helped facilitate the sidewalk repairs utilizing the ARPA money. And I know that the subcontractors that were used, they did a really good job vetting these people. They were friendly, they were clean. And just coincidentally, they broke my sprinklers in front of my house. But with that said...
Are you here thinking it?
No, I am, because, I mean, that's, it happens. In demolition, it happens. But they did a job like no one else. They went above and beyond, they were very courteous, they came back, even a few days later to make sure that there were no leaks, that we had proper water pressure. So I know that it doesn't seem like a big deal right now because nobody's really watering. So when we are able to water again, it'll be nice to know that it will work properly. So thank you, Sean. My family and I, we really appreciate that. The other neighbors on Amherst also appreciate that. I too want to jump on board with this facility that's being proposed at the Fairplex. I'm sure that the city of Laverne had to be aware, but I have to say that I'm disappointed that they were not notifying the residents, social media, website, so that the residents of Laverne could also attend that meeting, because I didn't know about it until after the fact. I would like to know more about it, and I don't know if this is something that Mayor Heffernan made me aware because he's involved with Transportation Committee, Active Transportation Committee. Are these 10,500 units part of the Arrow Corridor? Part of the Gold Line project? Is this part of Arena numbers? What exactly is this project? Where is it coming from? Whose idea is it? And with that said, because it's on the border of the city, what is the city going to do and what are they proposing to increase our safety? We are already, we've had numerous discussions about how our police department is already short-staffed, working OT, and all of these other projects, the homeless project that's being implemented. And now, we're going to have this right on our doorstep. So I really am asking the city to please be proactive and be involved in this, but to please be transparent and let the residents know when these meetings are going to take place. You know, it would be nice if the city got the information from Pomona firsthand and then maybe did a study session or some kind of informative meeting for the residents here so that we understand exactly what is on the table before we go to the city of Pomona and go squawk at their council. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Brown?
Good evening, council. My main thing I want to mention is the fallen trees from, like, January that are as dead as can be on the golf course. And I know that that property ought to have until the end of July to clear that. And now, it's gone to the county. Where are we with that? Because right now, it's really scary because it's dry, it's hot. It can go up and take out homes in a matter of minutes. So I just wanted to see what the follow-up is, what the timeline is, and when that can be cleared up.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Lily.
Thank you. My name is Lily. I'm a resident, live in Old Town, very close to Fairground. What I concern is still the transparency because I saw the social media all over, on the news, The Sun, Lady Bull and everything. It's just like a copy. Everybody said, hey, pretty big project. It just looked like a done deal. I don't really feel like it would do anything. Just get info new, come in, a 10,000 unit, and then how many residents? This double, right? How many residents in Laverne? Just more than 30,000. Think about how many residents are going to run away in coming years and live south of my house. So since three, four years ago, I know so many neighbors because we're against the White and White Avenue because we want to keep the Old Town feel. So let me think about if the Fairplex have that much unit, we were really, really close to metropolitan style. I was, grew up in building, okay? Why I come here is really the Old Town feel. I want our city more like the Kalimah, not, less like the Pomona. That's why we want the, don't want the people's, you know, property become White and White Avenue. That's how we got started. So now, at this time, we concern more about its traffic. Difficult, very hard, okay? And then, because Goli come in, we concern more about the homeless because we already saw the homeless warming in front of our street. Now, I come here just for air condition, okay? Too hot. We're good citizens.
And we got to turn it down.
We didn't, yeah, yeah, we did. Today, we just do stand, okay? We're good citizens. I saw my garden suffer without water, still dying, okay? My plant, my roses, everything becomes succulent, and succulent, still dying. So I am the rosarian, I'm plant person. For me, they're just like a kitty and doggy, okay? So in the future, how could we have enough water resource for the whole bunch, 10,500 units? How about electric? At this moment, we should turn off any air condition here, turn off, because we need to get the flash alert, bolt and iron clock, unnecessary. Air condition is unnecessary, only lighting, no? Because we need to save some people for emergency. That's our current situation. I really want everybody to think about it. Is it possible? Are you going to be happy with that? Wow, metropolitan, a lot of nice buildings. Ah, look at a very nice, small city, and that would, Goli, imagine that. I was already living in that style 20 years ago in China, okay? You should not celebrate. It's awful. So I hope our city will be really good to keep the transparency. I know Cash and Mayor Tim will watch this video later. Please have the transparency information to listen to Laverne residents before the November hearing something like that. I don't think, it's a done deal. Money already here, we follow the money, we have nothing to say. So please inform everyone to have, everybody have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to try to get that person on the phone?
Yeah, we can mark on the phones.
Okay. So why don't we pull up the Zoom? I would get, if the phone, I'd be available right now. So why don't we try calling them, get the Zoom run on, and try calling them so we can get it right, or at least.
Do you mind if I zoom?
Sure. Try to zoom the Zoom, and then we'll get right to you. Sorry, I didn't see your hand up before.
Don't worry about it.
Mr. Ballin? You're on mute, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you, thank you, sir.
Hi. Good evening, council. Mayor Broten, engine manager, Mr. Duff, welcome. I just have a couple of comments and requests. To piggyback on what Pam just said, we've had a lot of discussion about the Zero Laverne Golf Course. And we keep hearing that, oh, we're going to county, somebody's going to... All I've done is watched for the last couple of weeks, major fires all over the state. And they talk about the dry tinder. And as Pam said, there are trees that have been down for six months, eight months now. And the question is when? So I know she asked for an update, and I hope we get one this evening because we're a spark away from a major fire in North Laverne. And I'm sure nobody wants to hear any of that. Second is, we obviously now have an interim city manager, an interim finance director. And as far as I heard, did I hear that Mr. Igo has left the position of Public Works Director? And so if that's the case, what is the status? Can we get a status update on the filling of those three critical positions within the city? Three of them, the major positions within the city. So I don't know if we'll get an update tonight on the search, but it would certainly be interesting to know where we stand. And lastly, I just wanted to say that tonight's vote was interesting again. There's three people there. One on the stain, but two felt that the comments from the citizen should be disregarded, go ahead and move, instead of waiting to the next meeting when there's a full council. This is reminiscent of certainly past council meetings where things were rushed through. I just want to say that Cash ran on safety when he was elected. And the first thing he did was suggest that we do a safety review. So thank you, Cash, even though you're not there tonight. Steve Johnson ran on voting, and the first thing he did was to request a review of the new voting regulations. And he did that, and I hope we're going to hear a status update on that tonight also. And lastly, Tim Heffer, our mayor, ran on safety and voting and transparency with an audit. And in fact, Steve, Cash, and Tim all said they would want an audit should they be elected, when they are elected. So I am requesting this, and I can do this verbally, that this, the audit, be put on the agenda for the next, the next meeting for a discussion and potentially a motion and a vote here. So please note that that is a request on agenda item for the next meeting. And with that, I will sign off, wishing everybody a nice, clear evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, members of the council.
She's going to mute that so they'll invite her.
Did you go?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Broten, members of the council, residents of Laverne. My name's Vincent Sai. I am a candidate for State Senate, District 22. I'm looking to represent all of you.
Mr. Sai, though, just trust us, please. Thank you.
Currently, I'm a deputy with the County Sheriff's Department. Things have gotten so bad that it's gone to a point where now cops have to run for office. Myself, Michael McMahon, running to be your representative for State Assembly, District 41, Emperor Tim Brink. We are all part of Heroes Coalition that are law enforcement or prior law enforcement that are looking to continue to serve and help save our state. I wasn't planning on talking about this, but hearing the residents' concerns about the 10,500-unit housing being built on the Fairplex. My opponent wrote SB 9 and voted for SB 10. These bills allow developers to come in and build multi-unit duplexes on plots of land meant for single-family homes. This is going to cause problems for our infrastructure. Electric, water, there's not going to be enough parking. They only require one parking space per unit. Traffic can be out of control. So in office, I am looking to repeal SB 9 and SB 10 so that we can save our single-family neighborhood. And so that it don't look like these new developments where it's just row after row after row of duplexes that look exactly the same. Being a law enforcement officer, I'm looking forward to tackling the issue on crime. It's out of control. I'm going to look forward to repealing AB 109, Prop 47, and Prop 57. Criminals need to be held, criminals need to be held accountable for their crimes. And victims and survivors need the support that they deserve, not the other way around. I think if everybody's fine, I appreciate you listening. If anybody wants to find out anything more about me, Sai, the number for senate.com, sci4senate.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sai. And the phone? You're doing a great job.
Hi, this is Joseph. This is Aaron from State Overhead. We have you in the hospital. Okay. I'm glad you're on speaker. Joseph.
Thank you, Mr. Galloren. We can, please speak so we can hear you.
Okay, no. Thank you very much. Sorry I couldn't be there this evening, but I wanted to call in and comment and echo very, pretty much everything that's been said tonight regarding the Fairplex proposal for the development of over 10,000 homes. I think just in, from perspective for those in the audience and those listening, that the city of Laverne itself has just over 11,000 homes in all of its area. And that area is 8.56 square miles. Square mile is approximately 640 acres. For the density of the 10,500 homes in a parcel of land approximately 200 to 300 acres by itself, we're talking about a density that is nothing like we've seen in any surrounding community outside of perhaps the city of Los Angeles itself. So I think that it's time for the council to take this more seriously than it probably has. And the idea that there's no way that that project was developed overnight and without the participation of somebody with the city of Laverne, where transparency is very much an issue. And for those of those, for those residents who live in proximity to this area whose world will be disrupted, whether it's in five years, 10 years, 15 years, including council members who live along that Arrow Highway corridor, I beg them to look at this through a different lens perhaps and see what this could bring to Laverne. Not just the positives that are easy to sell people, but what are those true challenges that must be reviewed and critically thought through, including what was mentioned this evening regarding the whitening of White Avenue. White Avenue was preserved because of the community's uprising. That said, it is also a bottleneck for the proposed traffic that is going to need White Avenue to move north and south along its corridor up to the 210 and down with the 10. So this is a serious thing. Quality of life is at our concern. The length of White Avenue, property values, essentially doubling the Laverne housing market on its border. All those things should take interest in the assets, should take... All those things should be taken seriously, the assets should be taken seriously forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galloron. Any last public comments? Okay, we'll close public comments and move to city council comments. Councilman Johnson?
Question. I know that planning...
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Actually, I'm sorry. There were a couple of questions. I'm sorry, I want Mr. Duff to begin and respond to it all. Mr. Duff, I know there was a response about the city manager. Where are we in that process? I know applications, I believe, are in?
Applications will close September 9th, which is Friday. The recruitment firm that the city has hired to do the search has indicated that it'll take a couple of weeks for him to arrive at, sift through the candidates and arrive at some manageable number of candidates for the city council to interview. We have a preliminary date of Friday, October 7th, from council members, that we hope to have the first round of interviews for the city manager position. Following that, there's a background checks and a number of other things that need to occur. So the recruitment is on schedule. And it is hoped that if we're able to keep to the schedule, that there should be a permanent city manager appointed hopefully by mid to late November.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Igo. We're here, so thank you. Appreciate all the time you're doing. We also have interim finance, and I know we're, we're out and recruiting that as well.
Well, yeah, the, the finance position, we're hoping the city council will approve an agreement that will appear on your September 19th agenda. And that position, hopefully, if the council approves that, that agreement, should be ready to start within two weeks following that. So the finance director position appears to be hopefully settled. The public works director, it is true, Mr. Igo is moving on to another opportunity. We are out recruiting right now. It's already been flung for, for the position. And typically, recruitment for that level of management position will take probably three to four months. In the, in the meantime, we are also bringing an interim public works director contract to the council on September 19th. And hopefully, if that's approved, you will have an interim public works director starting immediately thereafter.
Thank you. I appreciate everything Mr. Igo's done. And the last one, I'm sorry. Is there any update about the golf course? And there might not be. Might just need to bring back to the next meeting.
The golf course, okay. Somebody mentioned that there is, and there is a process for these things. And I apologize for sometimes bureaucracy just drags on forever. But the notice to the property owner has been given. His, his time to respond has come and gone. So we're in a position now to develop a, a plan to hopefully address the downed trees that are within 200 feet of a residence. I want to caution you, this, the plan we're putting together will not address all the downed trees. Those are outside, that are outside the 200-foot area. We won't be addressing those. Hopefully, they'll be addressed at some time in the future. But our fire chief, just now with the fire chief and the fire marshal, they've indicated that they are highly concerned about fire danger as well. And we are prepared to, hopefully, find the fastest track possible to getting those trees that are within 200 feet of residences cleared. That's, that's our hope. I don't think there's much more to add than that.
Thank you. I think that's all the questions I know and the concerns of the... And maybe this, just, I'm sorry, maybe discuss that is there Pomona's specific plan that they are trying to develop, but we should put out to residents when those dates are?
Right. That was my only, that was my only comment. I wanted to assure residents that we have been in contact with the Fairplex as well as the city of Pomona. And we have told them that we would like the neighborhoods in Laverne that's adjacent to the Fairplex to be notified of any future meetings concerning the specific plan. Now, what form that notice takes, I think will be consistent with the form that takes in Pomona. I don't know if they're mailing notices or they're doing door hangers. But our hope is whatever they're doing to notify citizens of Pomona, they will also notify residents that are adjacent to the Fairplex in Laverne. In addition, we are going to be posting future Fairplex specific plan meetings on our web, on the city of Laverne website, and wherever we can on available social media as well.
All right, thank you. Now, item number seven. Now, it's number seven.
Mr. Duff? Just, one other comment regarding that, I know, because I received a link to the video from the first meeting that was, I don't know if it was Zoom or a WebEx or whatever the format was. But we, the city does have that original meeting. We should probably post that one as well to residents that have not seen it. That's really the only comment I have at this point in time. But we want to be as transparent as possible, and if we have that original meeting, I think we should have it on our website for residents to, to go look at it. I mean, there's nothing worse than hearsay and, you know, telephone tree where everything gets put out of context. So I'd better have the facts out there.
Excellent. Councilmember Ivonne?
To go along on that, for those of you that may not have remembered, but I think it was last meeting and the meeting prior, previous it might have been, I did receive, I live right by the Fairplex, and when I say right by the Fairplex, I mean I can spit and probably hit the Fairplex. So the Fairplex was the one who sent notices to my neighborhood. So I don't know what the city of Pomona is doing, so I appreciate our interim city manager looking into that to make sure that the residents who are living adjacent to the Fairplex get the same notice from the city of Pomona. However, I did announce during my council comments that there was a meeting on August 31st. So I will continue to provide updates because I care about what happens at the Fairplex because, like I said, I could spit, like, reach the Fairplex from where I live. But I did also attend the meeting that took place on the 31st. And to Councilmember Johnson's point, it is really important that you look and read and learn about these things on your own, rather than just taking the word of someone that tells you something. The specific plan is available on the Fairplex's website, so you can look through the entire document if you are not able to make it to the meeting. It does have like the whole background, the context, et cetera. And it will at least, it will give you the information to make the decision that you think is appropriate for you. Looking at the website right now, they don't have a specific date for November. But as I said, if and when I get the notice, which I probably will because I looked at close, I will advise during my council comments about when that event is taking place. But again, you can look through the history of the specific plan process up until this point and educate yourselves on what is happening. So take a look, and I will say this, the numbers that are being thrown out there is, from what I understand, so don't take it from me, take it, go read and figure this out for yourself. But that is not like in a year, 10,500 units are coming up. That is if they were to actually approve at all phases and if there was actually money to actually achieve all of those things. So that's where the input from the community is important, to say, what do you want first? What does, or does make sense for that particular plot of land? Which, by the way, can fit all of Exposition Park and or Disneyland in there, which I thought was really impressive because I didn't know that it was that huge. But please go take a look, educate yourselves, and learn about it. The other things I will point out, the YFAC meeting took place on August 23rd, and I'm sure Mayor Protem Cosby will have some points to share as well. But I thought it was a very good meeting. The BUSD gave their report, it was right before school was starting. So it was a really great... I do want to give kudos out to the police department. I think Colleen is on the, on the, on the phone. But they're running a wonderful tobacco prevention program with our students, and I think it's pretty amazing. So if you haven't had a chance to talk to them about the proactive steps that they're taking with our community, that's really amazing. So take a look there. Tri-City Mental Health, who you know is a partner to this city, has also been providing a tremendous resource to our children. I know we've talked about this in the past, but the pandemic has really done a number on mental health. And so the resources that are available through Tri-City is invaluable. So if you aren't familiar, please familiarize yourselves with it because you never know when someone you know might be in need of those services. And to tag on to Hispanic Heritage Month, Happy Hispanic Heritage Month, starting September 15th. The other thing that September is known for, it is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And again, I would urge you to take a look at Tri-City's website. There are a lot of programs that are free and available for folks that want to learn more about how to help folks that may be encountering incidents of suicide ideation. Maybe you're feeling that, but take a look. It's really important. Again, mental wellness, especially in this time, is really important. And then on a somewhat personal note, I also want to say thank you to Boulevard Fire Department and to Boulevard Police Department. A couple of days ago, a fire, if you were aware, took place at the public storage right on Arrow and White. Again, that is spinning distance from where I live. And so I didn't even know it happened until I got a text from a neighbor at 5:00 AM saying, "Did you hear this? Did you see this?" And she said it immediately. When she heard the explosion, she called. And our fire department and our police department were out there, in the fairway. So thank you so much for containing that. It really could have been far worse, far worse. So I appreciate you so much. So thank you, and as always, have a good week. Be kind to each other and stay cool and hydrated.
Thank you, Councilmember Ivonne. I'll be short this week because it is warm outside. We do have the library open, have air conditioning. Thank you, Yvonne, for having our cooling centers open for our residents as well. Please look after one another, check on one another, especially during these prime times when the heat's out and people's air conditioner, my air conditioner went out this weekend. The fuse is gone. There's not a fuse, let me tell you. You're 150 miles when we're around here in any home depot or Lowe's or something like that. So make sure you stock up on those. Because when this time comes, when you need it, you really will. But just look out, out for each other. So today, we're having adjournment to Monday, September 19th, 2022, at 6:00 PM to honor for our Little League presentation. So come out and help honor our, our Little League softball and Little League baseball teams that went on so far. We adjourn, have adjournment in memory of our Laverne police RSVP, Anne Andrick. Anne was born on November 26th, 2019, 2028. She became an RSVP in 2003, and she volunteered almost for every assignment. She always had a smile on her face and loved every aspect of her duties as RSVP. Anne's favorite assignment was patrolling, and she earned the nickname of Leadfoot. And then she came by my house a couple of times. She loved helping with the Baker to Vegas race and driving in the Los Angeles County Fair Parade. Anne contributed over 3,700 hours in the 19 years that she served the Laverne Police Department. One of her favorite hobbies was bowling. She'll be missed for her humor and beautiful smile. Also, in memory of Ontario fire engineer Curtis Trevor Gold. On the morning of August 27th, 2022, fire engineer Gold passed away during an off-duty accident. Curtis was raised in Laverne and graduated from Benita High School in 2006. He attended the University of Redlands to pursue his bachelor's in business, where he was also the wide receiver for the football team. Later in his professional career, he joined the city of Ontario as a firefighter in 2016 and was promoted to fire engineer in 2019. He was an active member of the urban search and rescue team and was also a training instructor. Curtis was a passionate member of the community participating in many charitable projects. Some of the things he loved doing included spending time with his family and friends at the river, playing softball, mountain biking, making people laugh, and creating new memories with his wife, Tia. Thank you both to Curtis Trevor and to Anne Andrick for, for serving so many people. We really do appreciate you. Our next regular meeting of the Laverne City Council is scheduled for Monday, September 19th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. I adjourn this meeting at 7:30.